I'd like to call this meeting over here because we all want to feel around some word tonight. For some persons, everybody knows my years of experience with the town. Jim McAllister is going to do an awesome guidance, I guess. Maybe we're going to use the way we're going, so I'll have to go ahead and turn it over again.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Does this sound level okay? Everybody here? Thank you. We're thrilled, we're glad you're here. We hope this will come a way toward him, but it was glad to see so many people turn out on him. Beautiful, I kind of glad that they see him. This string of people coming in. Let's make sure that you know where you're at. That was Mayor Jerry Beenhart who started it out. And on the far end, Commissioner Elizabeth Urban, Commissioner Ronnie Wensson, Commissioner Hazel Horn, Commissioner Judy Butler, Commissioner Mary Middleton, and then I'm the deputy councillor. A lot of familiar faces and a lot of new faces. I sincerely appreciate the help of the volunteers who donated to those on the corner of the parks who came to set up chairs. Please know this should appreciate it. We're here to listen to your ideas and suggestions for the future of the town. We pointed out on the flyer and the announcement that we specifically want to hear any input, thoughts or ideas you had about a community center of town, a replacement of a town hall, the improvement of this community center. We also put short-term goals as a specific topic because we don't know, we don't know if it's a problem, a big problem or a little problem. So we're hoping our expense about there for the evening. This is not a complaint session. The time and place to bring a concern, something's not prepared by the traffic on my street or a pothole, the time to do that is at the monthly commission meetings. At the beginning of every meeting, we sit and we listen and we address your concerns. You're also welcome to call the town hall, stop in. Ronnie Vincent, if you can raise your hand, is our technical clerk. I guarantee you that if you get an issue to him, he will direct it to the right person and make sure that it's followed in a path. But let's try to stay away from that. Let's talk about the future. Let's talk about ideas, ideas and suggestions. This is for residents of Woodfin. If you're here, you know women Woodfin, welcome. And if we have time at the end, perhaps we'll get some input from you. So here's how things are going to work. If you want to speak, have a suggestion, an idea, if you'll raise your hand, I'll recognize you to speak. We have one microphone and we'll take us around and our baron, Lee Reagan, is going to be in charge of the microphone. Try to limit your time to less than five minutes. Be specific, be polite, be courteous, we're all neighbors here. And lastly, remember that, you know, there'll be a lot of things suggested here tonight. The town won't be able to do them all. We may, I don't know how it's going to work out, but we are going to listen and we are going to take notes and it is being recorded. Are there any questions before we get started? Alright, so leave it over and if you raise your hand, Lee will get the microphone to you and we'll go from there. Oh, would you please still say how long you've been with us?
My name is Robert Mayo. I've lived in Woodfin for seven months. However, I was born in here, in this area, and I grew up here. I left about three years ago with a military assignment and then in the business world. I've returned because I love this area and I know the potential of this area. I've lived in Texas and Louisiana, and so I know what one of the warnings is going to do to the rest of the country. I was in Texas when the power ran. If you don't know Texas, it's almost on the power grid. Power failed and over 200 people died. Let me mention that again, 200 people died. This area is excellent for relocation. Obviously, the people are going to move here, which a lot of people have. But I was here originally and I've come back. And I think Woodfin has tremendous potential. And for a town center, I think it's already here. I think you need to move forward a lot faster. The town center is right up there at Reynolds Village. You can grow from there. But every town center needs number one, pedestrian locations. All town centers either grew from commercial, transportation, water, or roads. You've got it right there. You've got real estate already there, the roads are there, the commercial business is there, and obviously, the potential for growth is there. So that's an easy, quick relocation. The attention needs to be on what to do with infrastructure. We will highlight, it's the same as it was when I was a 10-year-old here. And the only growth is the continuation of I-26 all the way to Tennessee. It didn't make it to Tennessee for hundreds of years. So again, the potential is here, the ability to grow here. This is a fantastic area. People are going to relocate because low on fees when it forces. Thank you.
My name is Walter. I've lived here for 24 years. A little out of the Walter, I've lived here for 24 years. I support the concept of the county sector, the administrative county sector. I questioned whether Reynolds Village should ever be a county center in that conventional sense. However, I wonder where the money should come from to create the sort of town center that I think most others would envision. However, I think that it is possible for a relatively small economy, for Woodfin, to create a sense of place that was clearly envisioned, that acted with signovers that allowed for signage that would be distinctly different. Now, this could be the main street signs, but we didn't really think of it at that time. We did set up a provision for a signage for those businesses that are off of the main streets and might have difficulty, you know, getting for weight buying. And nothing was ever come about that. But the idea was a series of signage on arterial ways that would allow businesses to rent a space that would provide the weight buying for where they are. Additionally, there is really no welcome to Woodfin signage. There's a sign over on Lake Shore and Elwood Road. I don't know how that, not their bias there. But I think that signage, welcome, could create a uniqueness for people that are visiting here. Thank you.
Who's next? Raise your hand, please. Okay, you're next. Seconds and minutes.
I'm Gary Hall. I'm a big Gary, you're a man. And I'm going to support this now, what he was saying, because Woodfin, in a lot of our lives, Woodfin is somewhat competitive to Nashville. You know, people go spend more money in Nashville than they spend in Woodfin. And I think what Woodfin needs, towards what he said, we need a brand. We need to create an identity of what Woodfin is, that there are people here who value the arts, who value good restaurants, and encourage them to come here and spend their money here. But create it with signage, as John said, and create a brand that is different from Nashville and separates itself.
Hi, my name is Kimberly, I'm a Kenny Hunter. I've lived here five years in County. Um, so I'm a tiny, so many words. Um, now that we agree with the signage, I think we could potentially start with a satellite town center. Um, being that Silveline Park is already developed and we're going to be using the railway boulevard, I think it'd be really interesting to really have place making here for the town of Woodfin that's bigger than the park. In addition, I think a map of Woodfin that really outlines the key views, that aren't private property, um, key activities that are really unique to our area, talking about the topography and such, a really great history. My child, um, did an research project, uh, Justice Lester in third grade, on the town of Woodfin. And one of the things, we did a lot of driving around, and I think one of the things that we thought, for her project would be great, is to have a map. Um, and that's coming from that at the time in April. Um, but I think the maps and having the visuals of what town, what the town of Woodfin is, what it was and what it will become, could be really special. Some of the, um, places we visited in North Carolina that we love, they're interactive maps. So it's modality friendly, so whether you have mobile, um, issues, wheelchair, you walk, you're on a bike, that you can use your phone and use a QR code and it will bring up something really special about that particular area. So, um, those are a couple of my ideas and thank you so much.
Name is Scott Ireland. Uh, Woodfin, I've been here for a little 10 years. Um, I'm set away to have a map. I know the place on the wall. Uh, we'd love to have that on the website so we can view it. I know the color coding on the areas, we don't know what it is, but, uh, as you said, that's a town hall, when you said the color coding of that. And then also, if we could have that on the website where we can actually see it, uh, and note the zoning as to the areas which is converting, which is, uh, we can better judge where to go forward with certain things and which are being involved.
And if Commissioners want anything to say, just raise your hand and they'll bring you the microphone.
Thank you. Several of you have touched a project here and here to my heart. We do not really have a town website. Matter of fact, some of the things I'm involved with, um, the town, the town government, I guess allow them to post on the website, their website. But if any of you are interested, please reach out to me after the meeting. We are trying to develop a network of people that can take a leadership position on this. And it would not only speak to businesses in the community, but also advance things that are going on now down in our new park and just kind of one-stop shopping for what's with it. And this would be an opportunity for us to brand ourselves too. So like I said, if any of you are interested or know of businesses who would be interested in having kind of leadership to support this effort, I'm all in. I've kind of been doing some things behind the scenes on this very topic, so thank you. Are there any business owners here? Okay. You're going to be my first people that I'm going to give part to, so just be on the lookout. But, you know, does that sound good to you?
So just a question as to...
Hang on, hang on.
Hi, I'm Coral. I'm actually part of the first three-day advisory committee. So thanks to you all for bringing me around. I'm just kind of curious with your vision for the website. Are you receiving professional help? Will this be an outside vendor situation? Or are you going to volunteer to be a little more clear with that? Because I, I can send references, recommendations your way, but I'm just kind of curious if there's a budget or if you're looking for people who does it, that's the website.
I think what we're going to do is first open it up to people here in Woodfin who might have that skill set. We already have one lady who's interested in assisting us. Uh, yes, there might be some, um, money involved, um, because you have to get what you pay for. But yes, I'm very interested in talking to you about that. And also, people who really have the drive to go out and, you know, talk to other businesses. We need to form committees and we need to get this thing going sooner rather than later. So, thank you.
Who's next? Raise your hand.
Hi, a question. Hi, my name is Ellen. I'm a resident. I, I'm just wondering, do we have an economic development person in the city?
We do not. So our, our town staff is still relatively limited. You can see most, most of our town staff here. So we've expanded, prioritized expanding our planning department to account for zoning issues that we know are pressing, but we've not today added an economic development board person.
My name is Gal Hardman. I work with the community of all these, and I was on a board with the economic development managers for, for the Ventura County, all the cities in Ventura County. And they were responsible, and many of you probably know this, for bringing in businesses. And, you know, we're talking about a town center. We need, our businesses are all over the place, and in all honesty, I don't have a clue. I mean, unless I drive by. Um, another issue that came up recently was having a chamber of commerce to pull those businesses together, get them to work out of other businesses. So those are, those are just a couple of issues of pulling people here to, you know, increase the economy, increase places for all of us to spend our money in our hometown and bring people here.
I apologize for not doing this earlier. You did need to meet your town staff. Chief of Police Michael Dykes is in the back for us. We appreciate it. And then your town staff on the left is Shannon Brown. She's our new town CEO manager. Adrian, Adrian Isner, she allows our planning department. Ryan Vincent is the town court, kind of the chief of law. And Sherry is our director of budget and finance for the town. Other input, ideas, suggestions, please.
Hi, my name is Hannah Dunn. I've been here about four years. And just to be a little concur, I mean, um, we had conversations about a town center. And, uh, I remember this comes up as an idea. I think it's, most town centers or what I would call downtown areas tend to grow organically around traffic patterns, the way people use it, what's there, and not a planner. But I can see some channels around this mountain. So just as an alternative way to think about what Woodfin is, Walter, is a series of town centers rather than one downtown area. Now, it might be that it's a downtown area available or administrative downtown area that could develop around some of our office, uh, municipal buildings. But I think it's worth thinking about what we have, whether it's the retail car on the chairman or the riverfront, there are areas that are already in place that may be easier for us to market as opposed to trying to be a little weird or go downtown, which is already established, or an actual downtown, which is already pretty well established. So just a thought, a little way to think about it. Thank you.
Who else?
Hi there, my name is Colin Willis. I've lived in Woodfin for four years. And just a couple of comments on several of the topics that we discussed. I agree with, uh, the gentleman's footpath and walls in that it, we don't place it a great, a great place. But given the confines of what's already built here, it kind of is what it is. Kind of the assisted living center, the retail center that's there, but everything else, there's really no room to grow. You certainly shouldn't build the town government in there. There's no room for that. So I just wanted to echo that, maybe look at, you know, maybe do a survey of lighted properties in Woodfin that need to be retooled, and maybe there's another those around in a, you know, concentric area that would allow for the development of a town center on a governance scale. Okay, help a community center and a town center that you guys are planning to act. Uh, on the website, I would just recommend that whatever that you, try not to use a no-code system, because you'll be able, once it's built, you'll be able to make changes yourself. You won't have to call a program to, you know, use C sharp or whatever to make all this stuff done. So just a couple of comments on that.
I'm Mike Taylor. I've lived here for four years. This is my hard time. I really love it. We love the trash service. Uh, I believe I live here, basically, we came to the idea that we also have air B and B, and we've talked about that idea. And I just, when I looked at the flyer, it says, "Our shelter, our wells, like there would be a problem." And, you know, our experience, if they know there's another house next to us that has water, we live there all the time and we have gas. But one of the things I don't know people, I know through air B, uh, they would take about 30% of the total cost. But there's about 32% of every dollar that comes out, it goes to some entity. I'm not exactly sure who is listed in the air B and B as gas, service fee, and occupancy taxes. Now, I don't know if you realize that there are, let's keep, end up being significantly amount of money. Always when we look at revenue, I think it's important to look at revenue that I can generate for things like air B and B. So just to point out that we enjoy being the air B and B hosts and, uh, we kind of hope that, I'd like to talk to everybody about issues, threat of air B and B.
Are we getting topics?
Parking.
No, I meant that maybe we can count this.
So just on the air B, Rob, do you want to call one item to your all's attention? Uh, there's, there is, as you stated, an occupancy tax in the county that's not something that we as the Woodfin Town Government control. That is set by the county. And in terms of how that fund has to be administered, it's dictated by the state legislature. And historically, the state legislature has not been, uh, acted to make any changes to that. They've required that predominantly be spent on more advertising for additional tourists into the area, which many don't think that's necessarily the best use for that fund. Recently, in the current short section, votes, short session going on in the General Assembly right now, an effort has been made to reform the distribution of that occupancy tax, and it has stalled. And so if anyone else is as concerned with that, uh, that particular tax and the use of that tax as I am, I encourage you to reach out to your state legislators at this point because that effort has, by all appearance, has stalled, but many thought that that was a no-brainer and should be immediately affected. And so if you are interested in that topic, this would be the opportune time to make contact with your state legislators.
So the occupancy tax this gentleman has to pay doesn't come back to the town of Woodfin, the Reynoldsville area?
Yeah.
Does it go to the TDA?
It goes to, yeah. But the current, the current distribution is that it will be 75% of it restricted for advertising and then 25% of it goes to projects that are designed to promote tourism. So in one way, shape, or form, it's all designed to promote tourism. An effort's had been made to redirect some of that to go to address the impact of tourism, like the toll it takes on our infrastructure. Really common sense things. Uh, that's, that, that level of common sense, uh, I think we can all see in modifying that tax, quite, quite frustrating with this effort to modify the, the distribution of the tax is now stalled. So it's frustrating for me. I, I hope it's frustrating for you all, and if that's the case, please do contact your local legislators.
Honey, which topic, just one or two such topics?
Oh, we can, we can, we're not on any particular topic. Anything is there.
My name is Linda Overbeck. I, uh, lived in Woodfin over nine years. And in Beverly Hills, that's my address, also. Most of you probably know it pretty well. Um, it, it started in, in 2005, the original homes. There now are 24 constructed, uh, some, lots still exist. Um, there is no HOA. The purpose is not even lots developed covenants, but included HOA, so there's no way to enforce the covenants. We're on septic and wells. And we have three whole house Airbnbs and two home stays in 20, 24 houses. Um, I want to point out, this is in a neighborhood that's retired. There are lots of young families with lots of children. And one of the whole house Airbnbs sits at the end of the road amongst amidst four families that have 12 children among them. And so people going to that Airbnb, sometimes go over, kill and die, risk hitting these wonderful children playing together in our homes. Um, so why do I have an issue with this? Well, there's no supervision. They're noisy. They've got fire pits in the woods, many cars. I have a picture on my home of eight cars in front of one of the houses on the weekend about a month, month and a half ago. I don't personally have a problem with home stays. I think as long as they're supervised, it's not that big a deal. Um, but beyond my neighborhood, because I, I've worked in lots of areas in Woodfin doing different things, and there is one developer who, uh, created an HOA with his townhouse development, but he kept control of enough of the units that the people who purchased homes there don't even have any control in their HOA. So he has created a whole lot of short-term rentals within that development. Um, and I, even in the older, original neighborhoods in Woodfin that were created, you know, one, as I was distributing flyers for this meeting a week ago, you know, one resident said that an Airbnb owner, I should say short-term rental, not Airbnb, um, owned two properties. One, he rented long-term. The other was a, a short-term rental. He took the driveway away from the long-term rentals so it would be available to the people in the, uh, short-term rental. And, and now the long-term rental's half the park in the street. Um, you know, I want Woodfin, uh, to be a community. I want neighborhoods to be communities. But the numbers of whole house Airbnb, or short-term rentals has increased to the point, if, if you're out distributing flyers or your candidacy politically or anything, neighbors quickly tell you, well, that's an Airbnb, that's an Airbnb, nobody's... In fact, when I was delivering flyers, I also saw someone out in the yard, well, I'll just go hand through flyers on Sky, uh, Skyway Circle, not Barbara. And I walked up and said, here, here's a flyer for this meeting. She looked at me, she said, oh no, this is an Airbnb, we don't live here. Um, so, you know, I simply ask me our community to, to consider doing what some communities have done. I know Eric probably knows the latest in Nashville. But can we set a link on the, for renting a whole house Airbnb, like 30 days, even two weeks, we come out on this weekend party? Um, perhaps, I, I do wonder if, since we have septic in my neighborhood and all that capacity issues, could we restrict the numbers where there is septic? Because there, there's certainly, it turns out, Fred, I'm telling you, that's way beyond the capacity. Perhaps zoning, that according to IJG's website, they only allow them in resort zoning areas. I don't think we have any resort areas in Woodfin. But is there a way, I know we're challenged by, you know, what the General Assembly is doing and what some of the judges have ruled in Wilmington and Athens as to what we can do, but there has to be a way we can creatively cut the number of whole house short-term rentals.
So I want to, that's, there's some great comments you made about, I like Airbnb, I like Airbnb when I, when I go places. But it's, it's striking to me a little differently now because we live in a tourist economy, right? And a tourist economy requires a service community. And a service community requires affordable housing. So it's almost if you don't provide for affordable housing in this area, you're going to kill the service community which affords all the money remaining for the tourists. So it's, I want to ask the Commissioners and everybody if there's been any research done on the impact of short terminals on affordable housing, the occupancy takes units off the market. get this off the market, that people could be buying, developers and investors are swamping in and grabbing everything before normal families can make purchases of homes. I think it's a broader issue that needs a lot more study, than, than I think some of the comments that are made have been good also.
Good evening, my name is Steven Palzo, I've lived in Woodman for 17 years, I work for Woodman County, I've seen a lot of growth and a lot of changes. One of the things we're discussing tonight is the area logistically, the things we're working for, all the county entities. Where Woodman is spread out all over the place, we have Orange Mountain, we have different places for things, we don't have a large enough footprint properly to put everything all together, but the structures we have here in place, like the town hall now, and this facility here, has anyone thought about scratching this and building a new structure on site, with the property already out of place?
I'd say that everything is on the table at this point. The town doesn't tend to hire a consultant who specializes in this area to look at sites and advise us. One of the reasons we have this now, we wanted to hear some thoughts and ideas from you, and all of that will be passed along to the town staff and to that consultant as we move further. Everything is on the table, we've discussed 15 different ideas, and there's probably 15 more that need to be discussed, but that's why we wanted, we wanted to listen to you and some of the points you've made are very good.
So, just to specify that a bit more, the budget that we just passed in our regrouping this month, there is funding allocated for a need study, um, and I think it's probably well too soon to speculate as to when that will be completed, looking for, we don't, we don't have an estimated time right now. Okay. So, so hopefully we'll have news to report back with, and to that extent, keep your eye out for the next quarter or so, and we'll, we'll publicize what that feasibility and need study comes back with, and at that point, we'll have a much better ability to discuss specifics, like you mentioned, in terms of raising this building, constructing something new on site. That, that will allow us to have that conversation in order to educate us completely.
Let me ask you a question, how many people have gone to the town's government website? Woodman-C-C dot, oh, that's awesome. Uh, we also, social media's either here or there, we have a great presence on Facebook, Ryan, I don't know if we have presence on other sites or not.
Uh, minimal, uh, Twitter and Instagram are used fairly.
Okay. Well, we do have a good presence on Facebook, uh, I'll follow it to the way and figure out what the, what the town is up to, what it intends. Do that.
I'm Larry here, and we've lived here five years, and it would be gutful if you could explain what the status of the town's short-term rental ordinance is. We live in a section off of your code road called Ventura, and it's our understanding that the town's ordinance requires a minimum of 30 days of rental. If that's the case, um, yeah, I have a copy of yours.
Adrian, Adrian, we have some ordinance language on short-term rentals now.
We do have one, yes, this is our one. We do have ordinance language regarding short-term rentals, but there is, you know, a periodated requirement. But in areas where you, uh, to have a short-term rental, you have to be in an area that's known that allows a lodging facility, because a short-term rental is a lodging facility, it's not a residential use. So, in areas that are restricted to residences, it's a 30-day minimum, because that's the minimum required in order to be a residential use. Well, we have a number of the town that are, that create any establishment or any foundations. Okay, Adrian, so, there are other residential districts that do allow short-term rentals, but the rest of the residential, my, they did require a lot of my use of it until about 40 years ago, all of which had the general assembly, they were able to control, then they all started, you know, bringing out the full out, uh, and then they, and I, I would recommend that if you have a particular concern about your neighborhood, that you get a advisor, Adrian, or I, after the meeting, or a friend over six hours, that we can help you. One of the things, uh, in my experience, I have previously worked at City Avenue, where there are permanent vacation homes and home stays, it's a very hot topic, and, um, I can let you know that you can adopt all of the standards that I collect, but enforcing standards for vacation rents is extremely challenging, it's very challenging. So, I, I would recommend that, you know, that that facility take into consideration as we, you know, explore what is the best path for over time.
This will also come out on our website, um, if you go on the website, because this is exactly what I did under chapter 30, when it gets into the discussion of zoning, it will give you definitions and purpose and overall short-term rental general statement. This is what is in effect right now in Woodman. There are some things that are probably, uh, required to be changed based on the case out in Wilmington in regard to regulations for short-term rentals, but right again, if you wanted to read what we have in place, get this on our page.
My name is Eleanor, and I have lived in Woodman 48 years. Believe me, I love the area, it's so convenient, and the people are so nice, but we had a short-term rental to come in that story to us. The zoning in our area was R21, which is single-family dwell, that does not include a short-term rental. We have a vet, we have a plane, we have, I'd finally given up and started working with the owners, and just two weeks ago, I was cleaning my quarters, and I looked out in my home side, and there were 10 cars up there. The owners had rented, did two coats, so I said to them, okay, and I said, do something about it. Another time, we had 33 cars up there. Another time, 23, really on, uh, 23, very, very dry. At 11:30 at night, I called the owners, and I said, look, you have 30 minutes to get these people out of here, or I am calling them. Now, that's not a way that I want to live, but I'm sorry to say that I hope you, as long as, will do a lot better job. And I started on a committee, and we set up rules and regulations and limits, and those have not been followed. So, please, follow through with what you're trying to do. And, uh, one, where do you live? On Parktown Drive, County Executive Neighborhood, it's all, it's, it's down the road from me. It's a very, it's deadened street, normally very quiet, but these two guys came with jackets, and then bullied their way in, and then they took the town court, and for some reason and somehow, they won. Now, it is a bit, how privacy, it is a bit of a battle of our homes, and that, that's not a way to live, because we have invested a lot of our lives, the 48 years, into that home and that neighborhood, and it's sad. So, I'm just hoping that the guys that own it will try and do something about it, but I can imagine having fruit and having wood with that.
Hi, I'm Patty Neller, um, we've lived in our house in Woodman now for 40 years, I live next door to Linda, right down those place from the apartment complex, and I live in there, so I have two, two things. When you build a new, um, town center, could you please make it more attractive than the one down the street, and more inviting? I was in there one time, and I needed to get into about 18 years ago, and I couldn't get in. That, that was very disconcerting, because I thought, oh, it's a police department? And I need to talk to somebody right away, because you couldn't get in, nobody answered the door, um, I didn't know that there was a button on the side of the wall, that wasn't marked. And I understand safety, you have to have safety in that, in our day and age, and that's terrible, but I have it a little more inviting, whether it's Reynolds Village, or Del on the River, um, stuff like that. Um, I live next door to a short-term rental, and it's every weekend, and I get it, that people want to make money, and they have a home, and they pay money, and I'm, not to put the people out of business, it's just that I happen to be the unfortunate one that lives next door to one. And I had the weddings that are not supposed to take place at the home, and here's a wedding with trucks coming in, and tables out back, and bonfires on a windy night that were up late at night, trying to think that, should we go put it out? Um, they both went to bed, and they weren't physically able to put it out at the time they went to bed, so, you know. And, um, unfortunately, this past week, we lost our air conditioning for three days, and they had a really rowdy bunch, and we had two grandsons that were little, trying to put them to sleep with the windows wide open, and a sound machine, and we could still hear them. And it's just, and like Lynn said, you know, septic system is not made for, you know, commercial enterprises being put on that house, or, you know, it's just difficulties. So, whether zoning, which I know people don't want zoning, some people do want zoning, I've been in most situations where the community had zoning and when they don't, and it seems like when they don't, that's when we run into issues. So, if there could be a compromise of some, some kind, that would either limit mistakes or consequences for people, I mean, they don't want their house trashed, you know, they're there to make a little bit more income, but, you know, I'm there to keep my grandson safe from all the people right, right up down the street.
Uh, I'm Rick, I've lived here for 4 years. Uh, my question would be back to City Center. With question about, or comments about the demolition of current standing building, rebuilding, I happen to presume the city, the town, doesn't have a funding initiative for those construction projects, which I would imagine may therefore bond issue, which would therefore be to these taxes, is that correct? Let's be honest, is that, that kind of money, the demolition of buildings, the ready building things? You know, folks, you, you do the people who know that, and we don't.
So, bond issue would be one, so, if you're a general fund, just the, the annual budget, no, no one year, how the bond's sufficient to, to meet that need? So, when we commissioned the, uh, the needs and feasibility study, we estimated that that would run, I believe, 10%, or?
10%.
10% of the total cost, if that was estimated at?
It's really hard to predict, um, but typically, when you finance natural projects like that, building projects, it's a special financing tool, it's like a mortgage, and it's been a longer time period, and there are special rates and special programs for governments, so it's something we would have to explore in the time frame. But what that feasibility study, the first is to identify the need and the feasibility, we're going to study multiple sites, uh, including the existing town hall, community center property, or, or location, assembly, private property, some things like that. We're going to study different sites, find what is most of the world needs the greatest need, and a lot of the feedback that y'all are offering today, we take into consideration. There will be more opportunities for public input as the plan, the county falls. Um, and, uh, and then, once we kind of know what the grand need is, then we can kind of finance, uh, or give a sense of what the, the cost estimate would be, and then how that's going to be. But we're looking at probably a 30 to 40-year gap.
Okay, and the, the point of that feasibility study also is that we currently own a not good value little amount of land, one, one parcel which we are in right now, it's a very large parcel that's developable, so too is the current site for town hall. That location, the game, the nice, the highway, great access to the highway, is not without value. If there is an opportunity for a public, public credit partnership that comes out with us not having to issue bonds, that will, it would be my preference, I'll, I'll tell you that now, and I don't think that that's out of the realm of possibility, so no, I would not tell you right now that I think it's a foregone conclusion that it would be a bond issuance and an increase in taxes because of building a new town hall. I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct to say at this point.
Please understand, though, that our current town hall has some very serious infrastructure problems, something has to be done, and this building requires constant upkeep and repair. Let's face it, they're not, they're my thing, they're not new exactly, and they tend to fall apart, so we have to do something. The question of what we do will be decided in a one-time process, and obviously, if there are solutions that don't require bond issues and taxes, we'll go there first. This is good, next.
First off, thank you for the court officials for doing this, so great to appreciate. My name is Gordon Magory. My name is Gordon Magory, I've lived in, as I've worked for, for six years, bought a really badly situated house, and, and made it really wonderful, we're really thrilled about that, and happy to be here, and hopefully, this will be passed on to our children, both of whom are adults, and, and will can afford to buy houses, and I guess the event will happen. Very near Swatford-Jones Town Road, there has been available lots that have, if granted, building permits, there's a number of new houses being built there, and I'm aware from discussion with the developer of one of the houses, and this may be true for others as well, that the houses being built expressly for short-term rentals. So, I don't have any problem as a, as a former business person, I travel all the United States and see air B and Bs. Almost every time, hotels, we get very tired, so the air B and Bs are really fun, and you get to learn the nature of the city. But these were all small town buildings, or basement apartments, or something like that, and never stayed in a place that was built expressly for air B and B, and we have one being built very early. So, I think that's the thing, one of the things, if you can't do every, again, there, one thing we might be able to do, this kind of, for perspective, just put this gentleman to here about it, about the building and housing sector of town, we need to preserve the housing capital people in the market, support, and live in this.
Hello, my name is Larry Hoffman, I, uh, went, lived in Overbeck, I'm, I'm I went over there and contacted me and talked about Airbnb. I moved into the road that you talked about, the town homes. And my wife and I moved here in 2018. We bought one of the town homes there, stuck it with Senator Ronald's road. It was marketed to be all regular residences, town homes, except for four units that were going to be Airbnb units. Those units were set up to start the sale of the project. Okay? Over the course of time, the developer decided that the very last units that were down at the bottom of the mountain, he's going to turn those off with the Airbnb. So instead of having four units, we now have 14 units out of 37 units. Now, my questions are, is there any legal ramifications for someone that parking those projects as being town homes, not Airbnb? Is there anything that can be done about that? Just from a legal standpoint? We have met issues with parking as Linda, she does. And I had talked to the chief of police and the fire officer for running the county to see what could be done. And things that can be done about Airbnb is you must make them access to the streets. So if you have cars parked in there that is blocking streets, fire trucks can't get in, the police can't get in if necessary. So if you're able to call the police, put in a complaint, I think according to the information of the county, if you get somebody, if you have free complaints with them, I think you can leave that Airbnb outright or winter. That's something that can be done, restrict their access to what's going on with Airbnb. Another option might be for anybody coming into the area, buying a town, buying a home, make sure that they are quietly buying the home. Is it going to be for personal residents? Is it going to be for an Airbnb? If it's an Airbnb, why not restrict that sale for one year? That they can't rent that unit for one year? That would deter a lot of the investors coming in and doing what they're going to do right now. So that's not so different, just access.
Do you have a HLA?
I don't have.
Do you have a HLA?
We don't have that.
That would be something that I would feel like.
The Malfer is controlled by the HLA. He handles 14 acres. Two, 15 years and it's not going to be good.
I believe that builder is holding 40 more units.
Forty, could you, 40 more years?
Let me just quick comment. The short-term rental, we're taking... Okay, David, that's okay. The short-term rental situation is complicated. There was this major court of defense case over in Wilmington. What we wanted to do was get a sense from you that is it of enough concern that we can devote some time and attention to it? Sounds like it is.
Yes.
So we would then query.
Hi, I'm Susan McCann. And we moved to Woodville in 2018. So we lived here four years. And I'm very sensitive, very, very, very tired of the regulations down the street. But I just wanted to say, when the issue of short-term rentals is discussed, I would just urge the municipal city to differentiate between whole house rentals and compartments that are part of a home for people to live. Because I think there's a big difference in terms of neighborhood disturbance. And I can tell that when we moved in, we purchased the permit through Woodville. Our apartment was inspected. They determined that we had off-street parking. And I think there's a big difference if it's a apartment where local people are living as opposed to a whole house rental.
Thank you all for your time tonight and for all your service with them. My name is John Andrew. I've owned a home in Woodville since 2007. I'm not a developer from Texas. I'm just a dude raising a family here, trying to live with it and trying to pay off a bunch of school debt and better the lives of my young children. Playing on standing with them, love with them. The house that I bought and remodeled and we moved out of two and a half years ago, we rented downstairs. We had been into a fellow for several years and we do Airbnb upstairs portion of that. That most provide us with a form of income that is not insignificant. And it has long to pay off a lot of debt. I agree with you guys 100%. I don't want to live next to an Airbnb that where people are just coming in and boozing up and old bonfires. You know, I would worry about it for my children as well. We are very strict about people who stay there, we do that thing. But I understand that most people don't do that. So I agree with my fellow townsfolk, my neighbors, that we do, this is a problem that we do need to address. At the same time, I want to back up what she said in that we do need to differentiate between folks who are, and I don't know how to add to this, so how quickly we come to this conclusion. Folks who feel they're doing it responsibly versus folks who are coming in from out of town, buying up everything and just turning it into gross, short-term, you know, little Charlotte crap party, whatever. So I think we need to be, do some differentiation. I'm really happy with that.
Hello, my name is Sarah Javon. Excuse my voice. I concur with you because I run the Airbnb, but it's one room out of my house. Every ice cream, everybody, I go and look at their sites before I rent to them. Everybody's quiet and they just come and they go to Asheville or they're doing a yoga retreat or, you know, cleanse or something. Everyone's quiet, they're in a bar. And I was really scared to, I was scared to buy that somehow that income would be taken away from me. So I, you know, I just hope that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
I'm going to back to our, back to our ordinance again to show that this narrative clearly talks about the difference between a home stay and a short-term rental. And the home stay is an underoccupied, single-family home containing at least two grandparents and momma. But it's for other individuals to stay overnight for a period of less than 30 days. And then a short-term rental is talking about, you know, renting out the entire residence. So we do have a difference between those two options. And just wanted to be sure that everybody was aware of that. There are some limitations in place and there are some other steps that make it really complicated.
Hey, my name is Ryan Bree. I've lived in Woodville for three years and I did recently move into a short-term rental. I'm the same goes this gentleman over here. It's very, very avenues for some extra income, which is much needed in my household. We do the best we can to try to make sure that neighborhood isn't impacted negatively. And I guarantee that most individual owners of short-term rentals have the same mind. One thing I've seen other cities do is limit the number of short-term rentals an individual can own, can be as low as two. That guarantees you don't have, pardon, examine their baby kids coming in to take over slots in neighborhoods. I actually have the similar idea as I think the producer about having a waiting period. If you force a person to live in the community, they're going to run a short-term rent for a year. It could be a really good way to kind of embed against having people come in and do a lot of parting. They're going to invent their people. Just a couple of thoughts, but again, I don't want to, my ideas are sort of taken away. But I do agree there are some problems with the industry and it does impact this wonderful community.
Hello, my name is Jessica. My husband and I have been starting our website drive through our business and we have that for 11 years now. My comment is related to the town centers or really the location of any commercial or if you're highlighting or signing where you'd like to focus commercial development, whether that's for municipal services or the cluster stuff, or that's just a more intense commercial use. I'd like to hope that that will really focus along corridors wherever possible and that zoning would take into account ensuring that there's really adequate access to these sites and also that they are, if they're located along corridors or infrastructure is already in place and there's less of concern in environmental sensitivity. The way that I would go along with looking at some of the areas that have their current use of throughout the town, there are large areas that are known for higher sense of the commercial development that are not along corridors, that are in areas that have very steep slopes, that are very environmentally sensitive and do not have very, have access. I wish my commercial company, our website drive for our businesses, our residential property is in a town that's very across from town, it's very, very far from town, but it draws from Woodville. And it's a large area that's known for intense commercial development. Our road, all of the access would be on is quite narrow, privately being grown. So that makes me concerned that this is what sort of environmental impact and impact on all that access for commercial items and commercial uses. We moved into this whole Airbnb conversation, but I know that you've heard plenty of that. So just looking at where intense commercial development really should be located and where will have the least impact on the environment, but also the least impact on all of us who do good and work in the town. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hunter. So I wanted to just state the thing that probably nobody wants to hear, which is, you know, when you talk about the future, you talk about growth. And we can identify what our existing problems are to manage what's happening now, but growth means that, for me, that, you know, we're looking globally at the town itself and also where we're headed. And so if that means we're building city centers, inviting more people, becoming a brand, then not only do we need the infrastructure to go with that, but in addition, keep in mind for people who live here, like I took care of myself, plus three additional generations. I'm sure I'm the only person who financially supports additional people other than their children, their parents, and then, you know, another generation in between. So short-term rentals are not just big conglomerates. They're regular neighbors that are actually working hard every day in a job and helping family members to support their ability to keep up their rent or mortgage and be able to pay their utilities as well without going to public services. So I think there is a balance. And I think that now is considered challenging, as you alluded to earlier, when you're looking at personal private rights versus a larger expanded need of the community at large. And so I really appreciate your service and appreciate the opportunity to speak today. But it is a daunting thought to be in your position of listening to what we're all saying with our current challenges and also parlaying that into what would Woodville need in five, 10, 15 years, if that's your charge. So I just wanted to say that it's not pretty, but I'm not anti-short-term rentals. I'm not for what you went through. I'm not for it being my neighbor either. But there are real people who live in this community that need that additional income that doesn't come from their already big labor-intensive need and they have to supplement other family members. So please keep that in mind. Not everybody in this room has extra money or good retirement or any of that. We're all just trying to make Woodville better. Thank you so much.
This is, this is great, but please remember that if there's something that you think the town needs in the future that we don't have, we want to hear those ideas too. So don't think we're restricted to only talk about short-term rentals in the town hall.
Hello, my name is Corey McCann. And we've been living with this for four years and we really do see ourselves standing here. We've had a lot of changes in the last four years and the place where we live used to have a message of people that we know in our community can additional home stays and short-term rentals. Our experience has been benign, in fact, really interesting. We've definitely not had some of these massive parties of people coming in, but I think that we have enjoyed the picks and understand the size of this issue. We want to, we want to see people coming in, we want to see communities coming together and supporting each other and knowing that that is additional income and who is in charge of these spaces and really taking it seriously and creating a brighter community in that asset. Then additionally, I think we're to make a community center out of a lot of junk material for a real, real artistic space. Because we are kind of establishing ourselves against, not against, but with that, because, you know, we want to all be creative and we think our is to listen to each other, do new voices and really all bring to this world. So having a place to just keep, again, to listen to each other and there's more businesses and more artists and people to, you know, grow the space. I love the idea of that. I think that that really helps give an idea of what we all have to offer when there are notes and credits that we don't normally see. So I think that's definitely something I really love that, Jeff.
Hello, my name is Jeff Feis. And I think a lot of you know me already. And I again want to thank you all for being here tonight. What I want to say is, I just want you to kind of look at the space that we're in right now. Look at the walls, look at the ceiling, look at all the overgrown trees on the outside. And what I want to say is, I would like the town to redefine what maintenance means. Because historically, it's meant mowing and weeding, and that's about it. And I think whatever new town hall we have, whatever new community center we have, we need to look at maintenance in terms of just ongoing painting, patching, you know, organizing the chairs, the kitchen, rather than just let them completely go into total debacle. Let's try and maintain it. It's like buying a car. You don't buy a car and don't change the oil, don't go take the tires, don't change the spark plugs. You do that ongoing maintenance so that the car lasts many, many years. But it seems like, like with the town hall, there's weekly skylights, there's some environmental issues. The only reason the air conditioning got replaced here is because of this meeting. And so we need to think in terms of maintaining things as we go and not wait until it's totally just a wreck and then say, okay, we've got to start all over with something brand new. So again, treat it like a car, treat it like your own health, where you get your doctor's business and maintain it as you go. Thank you.
One important thing moving forward, whatever we decide to do with the community, do we have anybody really good at writing grants? Because whatever we do, if we can get some grants to help with any projects or anything for, whether it be maintenance or structures, that would be good work to do. Thank you. you.
My name is Melissa. I've been a resident of Woodford for twenty years. Thank you for being this wonderful speaking. I just wanted to build on the comments that we're considering a town center and the comment about development of thorough repairs and access, I would like to ensure that we're considering access for pedestrians and state walkways as well. We are not taking that currently by anything other than an automobile. So I would appreciate it if that's built into any future plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I was just going to comment on the same thing. I'm Coral. I again, I've been, I've lived here for eighteen years and we live off of West City View, so on Riverside Drive in. I rock my beloved cup down to Riverside Park for years. Every time I cross that right, I'm taking my life in my hands. So as we expand our park system, it's going to be really important to make those walk, put in walkways, make that whole corridor much safer. Kids are going to be using it, you know, lots of love walking with pets, which I should, I think I mentioned you, something that we struggle with my mindset. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lucy Crown, and I am not a Woodford resident, although I've asked her not to annex me multiple times. I live just on the other side of Elwood. I do own a commercial building in Woodford, it's the blue one on the corner of Elwood and, and Mountain. We bought it about five years ago. The downstairs is where they do a small business and the upstairs are two Airbnb's. My entire family is employed by that business. And also when we did buy the building, we looked very closely at the rules that would have been had for short term rentals and they were allowed in commercial districts. So I felt very confident in making them Airbnb's with complete kitchens and all that, as opposed to home stays. It's running very successfully and I would just like to say I put that at least in the commercial zones that you would consider continuing the rule that you have. And although I'm a Woodford resident, I fully support the town center for the town.
Well, we're here, and I want to say I'm impressed by you with the number of people that showed up here. And at that meeting, I'd like to remind you all, as citizens of Woodford or anything like that, that there is a monthly meeting and it always begins with a public product segment. So if you have anything to say, you can always be heard. But in that meeting, the previous administrator, orderly or so, would give a sort of a state of town talk when he did the, this sort of closing comments. And I always found that interesting. And as a long time contender of the town meetings, I would say that I've always learned something that I wouldn't have learned from any other, but so I would encourage you all to, you know, come to, come to meetings and continue to ask questions. And I just want to get that in because that's also people starting to build their own, so thank you.
I'm Marshall Drew, and I don't have my appearance in this situation, so I think Woodford town is such a, would be a very good thing. But I can also, I need to point out that a lot of us born here, eighty-six years, and so I've seen all the, whatever you change, I've lived here all that time, I lived away from the Raisin University and the Navy and all of those things I don't feel that it used to do. And I moved back here full time, all of it, starting in eighteen eighty-six when I inherited the house that I grew up in and now live in this up here on Mount Road. Sorry? Did I? It just seems like eighteen eighty-six. Anyway, I think the great changes of my oldest, my youngest, my oldest one, remember when Elwood Road was paved, so that helps for something. And, but I welcome all the new comments. It's nice whoever would bring Woodford to the house, of course, I mean, I think that's astonishing, especially the board here. Oh, sorry. Anyway, I'm telling you that, and I guess the main thing I would like to see done is to save the troops.
So I'm Gary, and I'm listening very carefully. And given we have, we have new council members with big, that's great. I hear all this talking about Woodford growing, prospering, bringing in an economic development plan to bring businesses here, new restaurants here, and I'm concerned, I'm concerned about how many people I'm hearing with Airbnb, short term rentals, and I'm worried that we're going to not have the residential accommodations for the workers and the service providers who are going to help this town grow. And I would like to at least put on the table very radical idea, it's not by other degrees, where they mandate that if developer is putting in what's called more upscale living accommodations, that there is a mandate that a certain number of those residences or apartments be set aside at some kind of fixed price so that workers can afford to live close to where they work.
Anybody else? Just a minute.
Hello, I've been here for twenty-two years. Two points, my two, oh, my name is Rebecca Robertson, and I do have Airbnb. I built a two bedroom, two bath behind my home, and so I'm there and I see it. Its statistics will show that women disproportionately use their homes to generate additional income, and that's a clear fact. So living in Asheville's expensive, Woodford doesn't have the property taxes that the town does, but it's expensive to live here. The jobs are limited and many people are using Airbnb's to allow them to stay in this community. So I would urge you to take that into consideration. I'm for regulation sensibly, and I think it's terrible that you, like you said, going through it and that kind of thing can be violated. So I would be in favor of that too, that really sensible regulations. The other point that I want to make, I'm a B-Ber, and I'm involved in B-City USA. B-City USA was founded here in Asheville, the number one city in outer three hundred, including Atlanta and Chicago. And one of the things that is required of a big city is that the city gets on board and plants, native plants on city property. And they also agree not to use pesticides. So we live in this beautiful, in these beautiful mountains, and as you know, the birds are coming in and there's a lot of crazy stuff going on, but that's one thing that we can put in place, is trying to do our best to save our pollinators. Another issue that really affects pollinators, nighttime pollinators, is light pollution. So the new developments that are going in, the streetlights, the lights being left on overnight, non-shooting lights, all of that has drastic, dramatic effects on the pollinator. So again, sensible development going forward, keeping in mind the environmental impact of development.
Thank you, Ed. Just a couple more thoughts and comments. The gentleman that talked about the developer ponying up for residences is, I think, a great idea. A report just came out, my wife showed me, that says that Asheville is the most expensive city to live in, in the state. So I think that would be very helpful to help bring businesses in. The other point I have is that in order to develop the fourteen units I mentioned, all of the others of those units live out of state. They're either in California or Florida. So it's a little harder to get those people to do something, you know, if we have problems. So I just want to point that out, that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Yeah, so the comment about light pollution and these, the panel has already adopted, was effectively dark skies for this light, did it a number of years ago. There's also, they also adopted a native plant, plant handles for it. And so, you know, there are things that are on the books that the new commissioners may or may not be aware of yet, but, you know, there's a lot of tools and there's a toolbox to address some of these issues, but that's a chairman's point, I don't know, there are a lot of things, enforcement, people involved through this function of, you know, sometimes a little staff calling and people require somebody saying, hey, be perfectly aware of it and then, you know, being aware of remedies that are available and then calling it to the permission of the staff's attention so that, you know, they can, you know, do whatever is required according to the work. But there's always a lot of that.
I'm only trying to say, right, it's typical, forty years now, I've been developing this, turning into fourteen Airbnb's. Ten of them are managed by a health state company. There's no one for us to call, to go. There's, it's just a horrible situation. I'm surrounded by fourteen. I'm in a big community, I'm a healthy community. I have to sleep with your points in because I love the area and the weather and, you have the only way I can sleep. And I wouldn't know how even have an entire street of ten Airbnb's and not call it, a motel sits on steroids.
Anybody else?
It sounds like you need a, a saw for Airbnb's. Somebody to really oversee the total project for the whole county of Woodford. Maybe you might want to think about that.
Just one more thing, I forgot to address myself. I'm Sarah Towne, I've been here four years. And I just wanted to say I live right up on Riverside Drive, and I wish so, yeah, they could get up like that, because, congratulations, we got the park across the market, which is so beautiful. But I see why there's why it's so, I'm so afraid of it, because cars are like racing and then they come to them and, you know, they're kind of pushing them. If there was any way to get it like that, even in partial, it is, I'm so happy to hear that. Yay!
Go to the town website, it has a link to the Greenway Blueway project. I think you'll be very excited to have it. Thanks to all of you for coming tonight, I'll hand my phone back to the mayor.
Okay, a lot of you, I said, I appreciate all of you coming out, and certainly this is motivation and something that we're going to take back and study and not just study because Captain Mike and all, it's time to, anytime with Walt Brewer mentioned back here coming to our board meeting, this may have, we were like, we had our June meeting, we had one person that attended, and that was Walt. So anyway, you know, sometimes we're on, well, we're on line now since COVID came along, but at least watch those meetings so you know what's going on and give us the info that we're here to rest and stop by, catch us and learn. One thing I want to mention, all this, all about Airbnb's, I have one on the right side of my house, I have one on the left side of my house, and I have two inside of my house, other than the other two. And most of them are reconstrued, and that was interesting, but what was said about reconstructions and Airbnb's. Anyway, I, as the say goes, I feel your pain. Anyway, I appreciate you coming out and come back to take a chance, and we all return.